All right, we'll call the June tenth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Cambridge City Town Council meeting to order. We will start by standing and having a prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
The gracious heavenly father, we just give thanks. We give thanks for this wonderful community that you've given us, Lord. We give thanks for this spirit of cooperation that we have, and, Lord, we give thanks for the beautiful weather and all your provisions. Lord, we pray your blessings on tonight's proceedings and give these leaders wisdom in their decision-making, patience in running this town, and, Lord, helping to make sure that we continue to have a great community. And, Lord, we give all honor and glory and praise to you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Sherry, you want to do the roll?
Sure. Jim McClain?
Present.
Mike A. Mick?
Present.
Debbie McGinley?
Here.
Gary Cole?
Present.
Jim King?
Present.
Hi, Bob.
Hello.
And has every party had a chance to review the minutes from last month?
Make a motion to accept the minutes?
Yes. Have a motion and a second to accept the minutes from last month. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. And the claims?
Motion to accept the claims.
Second?
Have a motion and a second to accept the claims for the month. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the financials?
I'll go ahead and do the financials also.
I'll second that, I'll see.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the financials for the month. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
And that is passed.
Okay.
We have no public hearing tonight. We have no scheduled guests. I'm assuming you guys want to talk about your property and...
One other, something else we want to talk about also.
As far as the properties go or...
No. The designated parking lines on forty, who's responsible for those as to where they are at?
Estate, estate.
Yeah.
Does anybody know how to get in touch with them then?
You got number two? Vindott?
I don't think that, but if you get ahold of Vindott just up here, there at one, they should be able to get you to the right person. You don't worry talking about...
One, certainly.
Oh, one over here.
Four dollars.
Forty right over there.
It's a dollar store there.
Yeah, by the dollar. We got a dangerous intersection there at North Pearl on the forty where it shows and then a law, it's supposed to be thirty feet back from the intersection with a stop sign.
There we go.
Which, we got a stop sign there. And it's twelve feet and there are cars parked in front of Sherwood's. You cannot see a car coming east.
You have to roll out.
It's not the only one. I've noticed a couple others, but that's the one that thanks us. Yeah, the parking stuff, stuff on forty would be state.
Okay.
You can also look, I think it's twenty first Street in Indianapolis, but that's where the traffic, traffic management is at. Their offices are at for Endot off Post Road.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm assuming we're going to talk about blighted properties here in a minute. I don't know if there's anything you want to bring up then, but...
What is it, Ken?
So we're, we're talking about the properties here in a minute, so if you want something.
It's coming up.
And we'll go to unfinished business. First up was the proposal from Co-Alliance. Is that you, Richard?
Yes, I, since you guys all the email, I think you tried to, I was going to discuss the last meeting, but not everyone was here, so not just your last meeting either. So there was a five hundred dollar increase in the overall cost from the raising of price of the software for it.
So...
So the original quote was like...
Again, that's just the cost of software, right?
Yeah.
To get that in and out.
Forty-four ninety-nine.
Yeah, the original quote was like thirty-nine ninety-nine and a five hundred dollar increase.
Forty-five hundred bucks.
And that's just for one time, is that right?
Yeah, that's one, that's one time fee. We own the software then.
So I wonder how long it will take to go out of, we have to get new software.
Do you have to purchase upgrades to the software and all that, I would imagine?
I don't know.
It does not say that in the quote or anything, but it will, it does include thirty key fobs, which we don't need that many, but fifty-one extra ones, like fifty dollars for, for up to ten, but we don't need thirty.
Well, I guess the question is, is the benefits of the program worth the forty-five hundred dollars to us?
I think so, definitely.
You think so?
Yeah, we have trouble keeping up with the receipts. That way they're, I really sit directly to Sherry. There's no lost documentation. You can't watch everybody all the time.
Well, right now we get, what, three, four different bills, fuel, we get shell, we get, we get what's delivered here. So, I mean, that's not going to, this probably isn't going to save cost-wise on that, but it might eliminate some of the extra work for Sherry. I don't know how she feels about it, but...
The thing it allows for budgeting, isn't it? I mean, that isn't...
If we, if we do the fixed price, you know, some point down the road, yes, it would be good for budgeting. But we have the same problem with receipts too, and that's where we go sometimes that are not open and the machine doesn't print the receipt out, we can't get one. And so...
Seems like it simplifies the whole process.
Yeah. It streamlines everything.
I think it's probably really needed.
It's heavy too. We don't have to worry about traffic. When we're trying to get trucks in to get gas, it's one thing with the cars, sometimes it's tough, you have to get the big trucks in to get gas, get fuel.
I, I think if we're going to do, and we talked about this before, I think as long as Ken's all right with it, I think the south side of the Miller Building would be probably the ideal place to put it. It's a big parking lot, plenty of access, especially for fire trucks. There's already electric there. We have to get it through the wall, obviously, but through the wall. I think that, that would be our responsibility to do that, but they would take care of it.
Each fob would have a report? I can't remember. Do you remember how?
I think we set up how we want. Yeah, the fob will be probably per, I don't like the police department account or the fire department account. Because I don't want to, we don't need this.
We had those down Camp Atterby when a unit would come in, you know, we would issue twenty fobs to that unit, but each fob was issued specifically to a soldier so you knew whenever someone used that key fob, you knew exactly what vehicle it was going in and who was doing it. Or at least you know who had the key fob.
I think for us, we, we all would have individual because of our, we'd have our own car. The fire department, I don't know so much about that.
I like that one with the truck.
Assigned to a truck.
That would be the way to assign a key to that.
Yeah, and maybe the, maybe the chief of that one or whatever, but, and then Ken's guy, he'll probably each need one too.
Well, I think that's what would work best for us too, is one for each.
Thirty still would be more than we would, thirty key fobs are still one, I would think.
I would think that'd be one another. We need seven, how many trucks?
Five.
Five trucks, twelve, yeah.
And they could easily be reprogrammed. I mean, we reprogrammed those down there every time a new unit rolled in. So like once a month, we were getting a hundred keys back and reissuing those. And it didn't take, one of our sergeants there could do it in a morning.
Yeah.
Reissue all those keys. So it's not, it's not complicated, it's all the software.
So what's holding us up from deciding this?
Well, what, I, I mean, I'm, I'd like to know what Sherry thinks. I mean, I would probably ask her, but...
I mean, I'm okay. The reports, if it, if it's as simple as what he said, you know, each, if each report would come from your department or your department, as long as I'm not chasing key fobs, you know, if we've lost one.
Well, I think one of us would be responsible for that.
Well, that'd be yourself and my guys.
Yeah, because that would be...
We could, we could take on the responsibility of signing whoever.
I think we just need a motion, a motion to approve the program and then, you know, where, where the money is going to come from, which, right?
Motion to approve the Co-Alliance fuel proposal.
I second that.
And any comments on where we're on, Sherry?
Well, we have in general now, the police and the fire have fuel. That, I pay their bills out of each month. And we'll discuss that again at budget time, but fuel prices are high, so I don't, I don't know what the cost will be for our fuel, but that's what we pay now. Sometimes out of Ken's, you know, we take it N V H, water, if they're working on a water leak. If there's, if it's plow, plows, you know, we take it from motor vehicle highway.
Where does the initial forty-five hundred come out of?
I'm going to have to take it from their fuel, probably, you know, because they still have the extra.
Yeah, I didn't miss it. It's kind of, it's almost a capital investment in the software and all that, even though if there was someplace else we could afford.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the proposal for, for Co-Alliance to handle the fuel as presented. And Sherry, the funds come from the fuel. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed.
I'll let him know. You'll let him know.
Okay. Next is a progress report on the blighted properties and new complaints on Pearl Street. I can start by saying that Gary and myself and Ken all met this month, this week or two ago, to go over a lot of these properties. And Ken gave an update to us on, there's a lot of progress on contacting property owners and getting some feedback from some of them, some of them not. And Ken, I don't know if there's any in particular you want to give us an update on. I know the one on Pearl Street's a concern.
And that, and that is one, I got a call from a gentleman that works for the, I'll fit that, owns that property. And his boss is an attorney in Connersville. And he was on vacation, but, and he's supposed to, when he gets back from vacation, send me a response to that letter. But the guy told me, and that they're, when they got it bought, they found there's a lot of issues with the deed. And they're trying to get all that stuff worked out before they can even really do anything to the house itself. But like I told him, I said, that doesn't mean you can't come up and mow the grass and keep the weeds and that down and that. So I don't, I've not got a letter from them yet on explaining all this about the deed. I'm going to call down there again, call him and say, hey, you know, what's...
So they, they haven't mowed or anything?
They, I don't, I say, he usually has. I let it go for two weeks and they had nobody mowed it, so I went back in, mowed it again a few days ago. So, so as, like I said, on the house itself, I don't have no answer or not really, I've heard from them, but don't really know the status of what the deed is and what the situation is. So I'm going to get back ahold of them.
Let's make sure we follow up.
Yeah, to follow up, to get, you know, an explanation and writing on what the deal is with that property.
Okay.
And then, you know, the other houses, you know, we, when the three of us met, we went through and discussed, we added another one to the list that we're going to, want to take to the, put in that funding area with those other houses. And then there's some others that I got letters from that I'm going to watch them for thirty days and see if they start doing anything. And then if they don't, then follow up with some more letters, you know, to get, you know, if they've not done nothing, you know, something to say, hey, you said you're going to do this. When you going to do this? But, you know, we need to see, see some kind of progress before the town would take any further.
We, we discussed, we discussed twelve or fourteen properties, I think, when, when they were, at that meeting. A lot of them are on the, you know, come, giving us a reply back. And whether they reply or not is where the next step goes. We're going, we'll follow up and make sure it goes from there.
The one at eighty North Pearl, they have, since we had the last meeting, removed one of the outside sheds. So nobody living in the outside shed anymore.
We don't know.
And I've noticed there's less cars parked in front of the house.
They were.
They still got all the crap still around, but, but they have, they're going to buy a living in the shed evidently anymore.
That one's still on the follow-up.
And, and, you know, I've got, you know, the stuff in the yard, I've got to determine what needs to be taken care of and what, I mean, I can't send a letter because the kids' toys are... But there is a, a junk car on the north side. Like I said, but that, if, like, you know, Richard said before, if they're saying that's a demo car, that falls into some other guidelines and that. So, but the cars, cars are stuff that Richard usually deals with on property. But...
We'll keep...
Yeah.
The one about the deed, Mary Smith owned that.
Yeah, but it has to do with, from the explanation I got from the guy was when it was first sold from her, I mean, there was stuff that when the deed was transferred that was not done right. And it's stuff they're finding since they had got it. And so they're trying, said they're trying to get this deed all cleaned up.
But the attorney's the one who did it. He was her, she filed, they filed bankruptcy.
I said, that's just what I've, what I was told, and that's what I, you know, I'll follow up to, to get an answer. To pay the taxes on.
Well, we'll have to follow up and get that information. That's, we got to get it from now, so. We will.
Okay. All right, I know, I know it's not an overnight thing, so we just...
No, I understand. Yeah, I drove by, that's a problem.
Who finds it and then have it all?
Ken does.
I did just basically, you know, buy the outward appearance, like, you know, what I see. I've got a picture of it, I took today of the back of it. There's, one door's completely open and a window. And those are things I addressed. Everything's... I addressed with the gentleman on the phone was, you know, doors are open, you know, siding's falling off.
I said, broken windows.
The inside's falling down.
So step one, you have to, we can, we can kind of give them a warning shot.
Yeah, I understand.
And that's, that's where they're at, right?
I understand. That's, that's fine.
Thank you. Let's talk about the, the two new ones.
Okay, the one on Westview, that is one that's always, I mean, I send weed letters to them every year. They have gotten one, and that actually today was the day that something was supposed to be done by, which I did not get up by there today, but I'm sure nothing has, so that'll go on the list of the guys to...
That's one up behind the water tower up in there, right?
Yeah, some patch up in there.
Yeah.
And...
So is this one, though, the one on Westview, I'm just confirming, is the one I think of. I think it's more than just a weed issue.
Yeah, it is. That's, you can see all that.
It's, it's another one that...
The front door has a hole in it, has a...
There's nobody in it, and there's, it's falling apart.
That, you know, that's one that we, we talked about a little bit, me and Gary, Mike did.
We drove by that day.
It needs to go on.
And, I mean, it's something that, you know, I can put it on to the unsafe building list and send them a letter.
Let's get the details, make sure we know why it's unsafe.
Yeah, it's about to go underground.
Because it's, it's again, it's a man, it's basically abandoned building.
You know, they, they, I mean, they pay the taxes on it. They keep the taxes paid. You know, that's what, you know, I can never figure out neither, even Doug and that, you know. Why would you keep paying the taxes on something you just let sit there instead of trying to sell it to? Because I'm sure there's some of the property owners around there that has property that connects, would connect to it, but love would buy it and tear it down and keep it cleaned up. But, no.
Let's, let's keep on the steps on that one again, because it's, it's terrible. And the other one that's here on High Street?
Yes. And that was one, which I'll follow up with that one too. I mean, it was one of those things I've questioned my bosses before. And it's just a touchy, oh, that's a touchy, touchy subject. But, you know, so, but it is something that I'll follow up on.
Okay. I'm not sure why it's a touchy subject.
Well, one time, one of my bosses lived next door to them, they're neighbors. And one, and also another explanation was, well, he works on the fireman's truck some and, and all that. And...
Yeah.
Yeah, forgot about that.
Yeah.
Okay. Personal opinion is that doesn't matter. I mean, it's a bad property and they need to clean it up.
That used to be a business. I don't know if it is a business now, but...
Yeah.
Well, and even if it was a business, if he had all, all those cars there, he should have at least had to fence up, up around that to keep all the, that stuff contained inside.
Businesses have their own requirements too. I mean, they are not...
It was considered a junkyard or whatever.
Yeah, like you said, you still have to fence it in and make it...
If they receive any kind of a...
But I'll, I'll put something together and send to them.
Okay. All right, thank you.
While we're still on unsafe buildings, can I make a kind of mini-report?
Yes.
Okay. In conjunction with information gave me about the county blank program and applying for our grants, as you know, deadline's June thirtieth. And so I talked with county officials to ask, and at that point, we can submit the list of our properties that we believe we need grant money for to assist with. And it said that we are to be at a certain stage of our unsafe building for those particular properties. Well, as you remember, there are various stages when we go through an unsafe building. The first is that preliminary kind of warning letter that Ken gives them. Next is the actual order that it's an unsafe building by him. And I've, because of all this, I've done a deep dive into the unsafe building procedures. And that is, really needs to be in the format of an order that I have given to Ken now for him to use for that purpose when he declares it an unsafe building and what remedy they have to do. It is an order that he issues to them. At that point, depending on what that order says, if it is for a complete teardown, then a hearing has to be held by this council after ten days. Otherwise, they can just request a hearing. If they don't request a hearing within ten days, that order is finalized. If a hearing is held, the council can either reaffirm, reject, or amend that order. If the people do not remedy it in time, then council can, and the town can do, or you will accept bids to do the work. Once you accept the bids awarded, then the work is performed. After the work is performed, you give them a certain time period to then reimburse. If they do not reimburse, then you place your lien. So those are the steps. So I talked to the county, when it says your work, your procedure has to be complete. Well, which ones? How far along do we have to do on this? Well, at a minimum, the order has to have been issued, the order of an unsafe building. It would also be prudent if council could have, if a hearing is required, affirm that order prior to June thirtieth. As a result, I'm encouraging Ken, I think we have to get any order, any property that you want to apply for, an order of unsafe building has to go out immediately and be issued right now beyond the warning letter or anything else. And if council wants to, schedule another meeting, get this month after ten days have passed so that you can affirm that order if a hearing is required before the June thirtieth deadline. So that's where I am on it. As a side note, in looking at the unsafe, the town, oh, this is interesting, Indiana code has unsafe building code that talks about all the perimeters. And in it, it says that this code applies to, like, the city of Indianapolis and any other municipality that a, that adopts the state code for unsafe building. Well, in nineteen eighty-two, the town council passed their own code and verbatim put all the wording in from the state code, but never used the specific words hereby adopts the state code. So I think, it's probably not necessary, but I think it would be prudent to now add that wording. So I've prepared an ordinance that simply just adds a new chapter, one fifty-three point five oh, that says you specifically adopt state code on unsafe buildings, including any amendments thereto, just to be safe. If any attorney challenges any of our steps on it, I'd rather have it than not have it. So, does that make sense? Here is, if you want to take one and pass it on, just to look at it real quick, but that's basically what this ordinance says. Here, if you want numbers, we are at number five.
Five.
That's what I thought it was going to be.
Number five.
And you have to specifically say you're incorporating by reference what the words substantial property interest, that's who gets notice of that, which we have to remember too. We have to do a link search, so if some company has a mortgage on the property, they get a copy of that, and any other joint owners, et cetera. And it also has to note who's going to be administering this chapter. And I say, it's our Department of Public Works, by the way, the Public Works Superintendent is administering this program. So I think we're now completely covered, but I feel safer having this in hand as part of our local code.
So what we need is a motion to adopt this ordinance number five, twenty twenty-four.
That is correct.
I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance five, twenty twenty-four.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number five dash twenty twenty-four. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
So how long does it take him to get the letters out? Because it's fourteen days?
Ten days.
Ten days. Is that how, weekends or just ten straight days?
It's just ten straight days. Again, safer to do business days if possible with your calendar. But we, and I asked Ken to send to me, so I want to make sure all the perimeters of what has to be in that order are stated and then sent by certified mail to the correct property owner. So I would like to see those because I can see any attorneys on behalf of these property owners challenging us, and I don't want some loophole for them to get at us.
So, Bob, do we need to follow up with the order for the ones that we thought were already in process then?
Well, again, they'd have, if you are having a hearing, they have to be notifying of that. And so I just, I would love to see a ledger of where each of these properties are, Ken, as far as has a, who's got the warning letter, how, I think, have you just actually issued one order of unsafe building now?
The only ones that have been officially sent, the orders, was the two on Front Street and the burned house up by the liquor store.
Is that the one I just revised?
No, that, that one there.
Fix pad supply?
That is the house that we want stuff fixed on it, not actually tore down.
Well, that's all right. It's still an unsafe building.
Yeah, that's...
And so they have to, anybody who's an unsafe building gets an order. It's just not an order for teardown. It's any order of unsafe building.
Yeah, that is the one you just got done looking at.
Right, and you're live for you. Has it been sent?
Not yet.
Okay.
The other one I have that I need to go out and which I can put a date on it, you know, tomorrow, if the letter's ready, is the one for that trailer up on Vine Street that we were wanting to put into the, this grant.
But my question is, the three, do we have to put an official order through now or is what we've already done insufficient?
Oh, all the ones that we've already done. Well, the first two, so this would be the third one that I just revised for you?
Yes.
So the first two really weren't quite in order form. They were just in the letter that you sent.
Well, they were, they were in where I had, you know, deemed it unsafe, that wanted to be tore down.
I would like to have copies of those.
And also had, had, were, that, you know, a hearing would have, because of the nature of what was, we were asking, they had to have a letter, or they, we had to have a public hearing, and all that was in those letters.
And those hearings have been held, I believe.
Yeah, that, we had, they were like...
So we're safe on those problems?
Those two, I would say you're safe.
Last December, we...
So, but if you have any new properties that you want to be applying for in the grant, then we have to, A, get the order out, and if there's a hearing involved, well, we actually even have to give them, you know, some you might not know if they've asked for a hearing, because any of us can ask for it.
This, yeah. This, this one here that you revised, that is one that would be a hearing if they asked for it.
Right.
But the other one I have a letter ready is for the trailer up on Vine Street, which that one we would have to have a hearing for. Yeah.
So we've had a hearing on the front streets, and we've had a hearing on the main street?
Main street.
Okay.
Can we get like a spreadsheet of what you've done with the property?
I can send that, I can send that.
He, he has one. I was looking at it.
I can send it to you guys.
Yeah, that would help, I think.
Make sure Bob gets it.
Yep. He's got one with the dates in there and everything, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So do you anticipate... So do you anticipate issuing any other orders? Well, I guess, let's back into it. Does the council anticipate any other properties you want to be asking grants for? If so, then, again, at a minimum, the order has to be issued, and probably a time given if they need a hearing or want a hearing.
In the meeting that we had a week or two ago, we only had the one other besides the three that were already in process, and that's the Vine Street that we want to include on the blank.
Okay, then the order has to be done on that, I want to see it. And then you want to set a time, is that one that a hearing's required on?
Yeah.
Yes.
Then we need to go ahead and set a date for this month later for that hearing.
Yes, we're gonna run out of time.
I know.
I know.
I mean.
Well, if he sends the letter to you tomorrow, and you review it and it's okay.
I can go print it off and give it to you tonight.
Can we set the date, right now?
I hope so.
We've got the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth of June. What's the twenty-fourth? Oh, yeah.
I think I'll be your answer.
Twenty-sixth. It's on a Wednesday, Bob, twenty-sixth.
Is that okay?
You guys want six o'clock or earlier?
We gotta put all this stuff together, just to mix, so it'll suit you better.
Well, that's about the earliest we could do.
Yeah, that's fine.
What time you guys want, five or six? What about you, Bob?
Will you be in town?
What day is it?
Twenty-sixth on a Wednesday.
Wednesday. Six might be a little safer.
Let's do that then, we'll do six. June twenty-sixth, six o'clock. That's gonna be the public hearing, right?
Yes.
Does that have to be in paper? Does that have to be?
No, no, it's not, well, you know, the only exception on that is if you cannot get the property owner served, and you have to serve him by publication, then it goes in the paper that way. But if you can get them properly served at an address for them, then you're alright without putting them in use.
And we have been in touch with those people.
Yeah.
And she, well, I, she was probably here a couple of days after.
For the trailer?
Yeah, within like two or three days after I sent them initial letters out.
So we should be able to get in touch with them directly.
Okay, so it's, you got the date? Alright. Anything else regarding private properties?
Me?
If you, if you want to say anything.
Yes, I ended up taking over those properties for my sister. I've got all the titles and everything put in my name, because she's just not well. I mean, I just can't get her to do any kind of decision, you know, like I said, so I just. Got the titles, everything's changed over to me, I've been over there for weeks working. I can get, I can mow the properties now, and a simple weedy, just like taking care of any property, I mean, they were overgrown, took me a long time to get them down. Took all the fencing out, sea everywhere. I believe I've got the animals mad at me, but there's no place for them, I already said anymore. And, but I can have roofs on those places and siding within a month. I mean, you know, and windows in that West House, and looking just like everybody else's on the streets. I'm, I was ready, all ready to do it. I've had some cancer surgery and I took some time to heal up here before, because I didn't want to be in that nasty stuff, but, you know, I'm back. If you guys will give me a chance, I'll make those houses happen. I mean, it's under new management, you know, I've got this, I've done it before. In nineteen ninety, I built my own two hundred thousand dollar house on five acres and everything, you know. My sister did twenty acres, and, you know, two hundred thousand dollars, she's still got it, she's suffering. I got out money myself, I just watched her, I wasn't a good brother, she stepped up a long time ago. And like I said, she's out of the picture.
Has the property actually changed, has it actually changed hands? I mean.
Yes, yes, yes. I did that Monday, we signed the papers at Greason's Law, they just haven't, it's, I asked, I thought it'd be ready by today. I just called and they said they could have possibly got me a copy, and I can get a copy up here to Ken. I've been seeing him, talking to him, he starts seeing me, but I just to let him know, you know, like, man, I'm a new guy. I'm making friends with all the neighbors, I mean, you know, I've got this, I really do. I drive the twelve miles, every day I leave my house and drive up here, and I spend the whole.
We've seen the work, and I gotta say, it does look better.
I will.
But I wish that would have happened many years ago.
Well, but I'm, that's what I'm saying, you want to save the houses, you want to save that neighborhood, or we're taking them down. Either way, I mean, I'm with you, but I'm just telling you, I can make this happen, I can. I'll look you all dead now.
They're currently under an order.
I know that, and that's what I mean. What do we want to do?
What's your name?
Chris Huffman.
Chris Huffman?
Yes.
Thank you. I just, I need, I was putting Mr. Roberts.
She just, like I said, she's. I couldn't hardly get her there Monday to sign the papers, I mean, you know, like, it was rough, just like you guys trying to get a hold of her, and that's why I said, I got it done Monday, and they're mine.
It would take a reversal of the order to, to make any change. And I don't know.
Well, officially, you can also just delay and see how much more he gets done before you order work done, I suppose. So if you want him to see if he follows up on what he is saying, then of course, if he does, then you're gonna save some money on tearing it down, because that was gonna be hard to ever get reimbursed unless it went on this program and try to get reimbursed that way for the tear down. And I suppose theoretically, it's always best to save something and tear it down if it's done properly. And so it's gonna just be up to this council on whether you want to, A, tell him to stop anything, because by God, you're gonna tear those down next week no matter what, or B, see what else he gets done on that, and kind of just put on hold anything that you're gonna be doing. Or C, make a reversal of your order right now, that might be a little premature, but those would be your three options.
Well, yeah. So Ken, do you have, has there been building permits granted for each building?
Not yet, because nothing's been.
So no work can be done substantially on buildings, right?
Well, no, roof and the siding, he doesn't need to have a building.
Don't have to, okay. What about plumbing, electric? No?
No. The only, the only time we require a building permit, basically, they're changing the shape of the building. Like, if he was putting an addition on one of them, then that would have, that would require.
I might be putting a couple of porches on, you know, and like I said, I might.
Stuff like that, that's, if he decides to put a porch on that wasn't there, that does need to have a building permit done.
I do, you know, I will be doing that, so.
I think what we would be looking for to make any changes, some kind of a timeline on when, when the work could be done, or something like that. In the meantime, I'm guessing we'll probably go forward with what we're doing, and then, you know, but obviously, maybe we'll talk to you before we do anything to, you know, but I don't know what's thoughts from anybody.
Can, can we go ahead and get this involved with, with the grant and turn all that stuff in like we were going to, but then still, allow him time to, and see what happens, that way, depending on which way it breaks.
Until the crane's out there knocking something down.
Right.
He probably can still be doing something.
We can turn it in and get the approval and everything.
That's, yeah, that's my concern, that we stop that process would not be a good idea, I don't think.
Can you do anything about the animals?
Uh, yeah. I mean, you know, most of it, when I'm in there, the, the groundhogs are everywhere else, I mean, you know, they're coming out of holes on other people's, because I'm there, I'm there almost every day.
And live traps or anything like that?
I can do that, I mean, you know, but it's like babies and mamas and. Now, I've got ammonia around my place, I mean, I, I went to the dog store, bought five pounds, or five gallons of ammonia, and spreading it everywhere.
What does that do? What does that do?
They don't like it, I gotta look it up on the internet.
Okay.
What, you know, and they don't like ammonia.
But, but the person that owns the property now takes on the same responsibility?
Yeah, and I checked, that, if you went in there, the deed hadn't been recorded yet, so it must be in the process.
Yeah, I did it Monday.
Okay.
Monday, and, yeah.
So, yeah, the owner, because we've recorded the thing, so an owner takes, and of course, he had personal knowledge of the order too, and what was going on, so.
Yes.
So we'll need something official to show there's been a change of ownership.
I'll get that as soon as I, I hope they would have done that.
From our point of view?
Well, since we now know who the owner is, I'm gonna, I'll keep looking for that deed that gets transferred, that, that, as long as it's on our records, that's.
Yeah.
Because I'll.
You don't have to have another hearing because of the new owner.
Okay, yeah.
And like, there's no liens on it up there, you know, like this demolition lien or nothing yet, you know, recorded.
No, that, that lien only comes after the demolition's done, then even then, the owner has a chance to reimburse the town for the money.
Yes.
It's only then, if they don't pay that reimbursement, that the lien is placed.
Yeah, and see, now, I said, no, like, you know, everything's fine, they were kind of worried about that. I went, well, I know what I'm getting into, but I mean, sis, I just, I just have to take over on this, I mean.
So, and that's appreciated on your part, but we also as a board made a decision and voted.
Yes.
To have these buildings removed by a date that was probably passed. So should we take an active decision to put this on hold, or? Because we delayed it to apply for the grant, basically. Okay.
We have to proceed in order to qualify for this grant.
Yeah, you probably, that would probably be consistent, if you did put on hold, you might not be able to.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't qualify for the grant, I believe.
But we could just not take any action and hire anyone due to the demolition and just, so it would be a.
So it's not an active.
A good faith offer to, to wait until we see something.
It's consensus decision.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be an official action.
Right.
Sarah Mitchell said they wouldn't make a decision until probably thirty days after we issue the July first deadline. So we wouldn't hear anything for thirty days.
They also said you can prioritize those properties that you have given to them.
Yes, yes.
I would recommend getting your, what you're planning to do on paper somehow, and the timeline on what those, what that would be, and get it into the city building so we could review it.
And recognize that there is a slight gamble for you in putting any money into it right now, because there is that order outstanding. But if you have faith in what you're doing, and you think you can convince this group with what you do, that they will then reverse that, then I assume, take the gamble, but there is that ground.
Oh, I started this week, I would have, but, you know, I just kind of, he said, hold up, hold up, that's why I'm holding up, but. I'm good enough, I'll go, I mean, I will go, because I'm not. You know, I want this to work, I want to get that house back in the system up here, I really like this neighborhood, I like that street. I'm like, sis, this place is beautiful up here, it really is, I've just gone with shame that, you know, it got out of control, I am. Because it really is a super duper nice neighborhood. I just love to just sit up here all day, I just sit. I've got a couple of shade trees, and I make friends with the eighty-four, eighty-four year old lady, I hug her and pop her and. Like I said, you know, I've met these people, I don't know.
Alright, alright.
Trying, I'm trying.
Okay, as long as you understand where you're at, I think we know where we're going at this point.
I'm on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Alright, next up is the fire department bylaws.
With my regrets to the fire chief, given the stuff on our water project and the unsafe building, I'm not completely done with the, look at the bylaws. Next month, it was not. It was not.
I'm still a bit bored.
Sorry, okay.
Next up is the quote to refinish floors of the wellhouse one and two. That came up, I think, maybe two months ago at this point, and Ken did four of those to me, I got two copies here, I'll pass these ways. What we have actually are two quotes. One, I spoke to Ken, I, and some of the guys as well. Basically, this is for coating, they took out coating the floor in the wellhouse here in town, which was a big part of that quote. So now the town is only the small, twenty-six hundred dollars or something like that. And that's coating the pipes, and Gary and I went and actually looked at those as well. The other quote is for the wellhouses out at the industrial park, and it's, it's much more, it's more, more involved out there. But those pipes are also not in, in the best of shape, and I did also talk to Wesler, got their opinion on it, and they feel especially the industrial park is necessary. And he did talk through the town, he said, well, there is a phase three of the water project that's coming, that is predicted in seven or eight years, I guess. He said, the question is, you know, whether those pipes will last that long. My concern is, we get seven or eight years down the road, and we didn't do this, and then we don't do the project, then we have uncoated pipes for all that time. So I guess, from my investigation, when I see this is a necessary thing that we need to do.
I agree, I agree.
Gary.
Yes, it was pretty evident.
You know, replacing all those pipes would be a lot.
I'm gonna do that.
Is this within the funding of a current project or the contingency? It is not in the contingency money, because to use the contingency money, we'd have to have a different person do this that we don't. We'd have to have Cooley do it, and these people are the experts on it, so.
And more, more than likely, this would be the person that Cooley would hire to do it.
Yeah.
Because this, this guy that we got these quotes from is the ones that came in and painted the new pipe out in the new wellhouse, and the new pipe that was put in, in, inside the treatment plant out there. So, you know, it's one of those things, it's, you know, it probably costs a little more because Cooley's gonna, you know, add it to it, and they're gonna say this much, and then they're gonna subcontract him.
Honestly, this is really, to me, it comes under, this is the kind of maintenance we need to do for our water.
Ken, how long would something like this last, with this restaurant, I mean, it's a good four, I have no idea.
I have no deal, because I've never.
Actually.
We've never had none of that stuff done. It's always, we've always just wanted, bought some, a little base paint and, you know, and.
It doesn't work.
That stuff don't last.
No.
This here's a, an industrial two-part boxy that should.
Yeah, I mean, does he have any kind of warranty issue on it?
Yeah.
Is it going to last?
I'm sure there'd be something.
Yeah, I'd like to see some of that. It's a lot of money if it's, if it needs to be redone again in eighteen months.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's some kind of, kind of.
I mean, when you look at the coating that's like on the contention tank out there.
Yeah.
That is a pot, I'm sure that's sort of on the same line of coating. That coating on that tank's been there for twenty years.
Yeah.
I'm sure the last, this one's not just a can of rusted aluminum out there.
Exactly. Now, these two quotes, Sherry and I were just talking about, you have tax.
Yes, we'll have to give him a tax.
So we can take a tax letting on him.
That's even better.
So we have the funds for this?
Yeah.
So what I would need is a motion to approve these estimates and inform this work. So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve these estimates from Hoosier Coatings. It went up being for ten thousand five hundred, plus twenty-five hundred for the other quote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll have Chris get a hold of you tomorrow, but proceed.
Next up is the expanding the wifi to the park, this is actually part of the HELP program, and they're doing this for all the towns that participated. They're offering to, to put the hardware in to expand wifi into the park, all over the park. And what we would be responsible for is paying the monthly bill for the, the, who we are wifi with.
For the carrier, whoever.
Yeah, the carrier.
Which, would that increase our bill to have to go all those, those other places?
Who does the downtown right now? The Lisbon?
They listen to fiber, but I don't know.
Well, what they're looking for in order to do this is for us just to come back to them. Well, what they're looking for in order to do this is for us just to come back to them and say, yes, we wanna do it, but it sounds like we need to find out what the cost would be, uh, for the monthly.
What the increase is.
Yeah, increase would be.
What, what would be the coverage also?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually specify.
Entire park or just, you know, the playground area or whatever, we.
Yeah.
Both sides of the river?
Yeah. You'd be able to have cameras all over the place, because of the damage we received last year.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have that.
Lose a lot of money.
But you can have cameras with the wifi, is what you're saying.
You could hook them up, really.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that something you can follow up with them, or who, who does that?
Sure.
I can, I don't care.
They need a decision to get this done soon, we could at least.
No. We can, we can put this off until next month and, uh, get this information, and then we can. All we have to do is get back to the, the help group and say, yes, we're interested in that, they'll, they'll get to it, and that's still ongoing, so.
Let's do that.
Okay, we'll table that till next, next month. Then we have the update on the, uh, Pershing Fire Contract.
They did sign it and, and gave me the first half, um, fifteen hundred dollars, and they need a copy of a, the contract, because they wrote all over theirs, so, um. So I told them we would be happy to send them one.
Okay, so they just need a?
They just need a copy of the signed one, so they can sign it and send it back.
Okay, I'll get that to you, and of course, it is not just for one year, not mistaken in every question.
And they wanted to, they wanted to talk about if we would do like a five-year, a five-year plan.
Get this one signed, yeah.
Yeah, let's do one for now. Do the one year? Yeah. And then we can discuss later, and I've.
Yeah, they're still well under, when you, just, in two thousand nineteen, when you talked about a five-year plan, it should've been up to four or five thousand dollars now, and so for them to want another five years, three thousand, may be unreasonable ask.
I did, I did kind of look at it and sent out some information to the council members as far as trying to. Is this what I sent?
That's what you sent.
Yeah, so I, I took what was used in the previous years, I don't remember, I think Nathan might've done that or something like. And, uh, what I attempted to do is looked at the cost per customer, based on what, not just Pershing pays, but what a Mount Auburn's paying in Jackson Township is as well, trying to even that out.
But we didn't raise Jackson Townships, because they bought a fire truck.
Yeah, that's why it has been stuck at fifteen five, I think we agreed to that for a number of years.
But I think you raised it.
How long did we agree to that?
I'll have to look on that last contract, I don't have theirs in front of me, do you recall?
No, I don't.
Cause that's what I didn't know.
There's a pretty wide discrepancy there, per individual, if you.
Maybe this is something we can talk about when we're doing our budgeting, and.
Yeah.
Decide at that point. Does that make sense, Bob? Yeah.
Yeah, and I do have the population figures for that, for Jackson Township, Pershing, Mount Auburn.
Okay. Updates on the park project and update on performance venue. Again, these, these are related to the help, the park project is the, uh, campaign going on right now, uh, raising funds for new playground equipment, and, uh, the current, as of half an hour ago, on, on the webs, the patronistic website for the matching, uh, grant, was thirty-five thousand seven hundred dollars, uh, which we have to have fifty thousand dollars to get the matching fifty thousand dollars, and I think there's thirteen days left in that, uh, but we also, on top of that, we've got some, um, pledges, uh, that will, uh, get us to the fifty thousand dollars, so there's no, uh, we're pretty convinced now, at this point, we'll have the, we'll get the matching grant, uh, plus, we have pledges above that, to, to get to, or the total, uh, what we're working on is to get the total budget, which was a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, and, uh, I have a high degree of confidence that we'll be there as well.
Yeah, a couple that have promised, you know, we just haven't got them ready yet, but, and it's not included in that.
Right.
Do you know if our firm got their check to you?
Yes, yep, thank you, got it.
It's been communicated as well, anything that goes above that, will, uh, will just add to the project, it will. Since it is a park project, it'll, will just add to the project and, uh, with more equipment, so.
It's exciting.
Yes, it's exciting. Uh, and as far as the performance venue, uh, we did, I did meet with the, an in, an electrical engineer, this, this week, this past week, uh, to review the, the electrical going into the fire department, and, uh, what will be used for, uh, it's gonna require a new service to be installed over there. So they're gonna be in contact with Duke and talk about that, we might be able to, uh, improve the fire department at the same time, so. The electrical in there.
It's only seven years old, isn't it?
Yeah. So, uh, so that's in process, he's, he's doing the, the specs for that. Uh, the specs are also being completed for the landscaping and the building, or the structure itself, by the architect, and these people are both working, uh, using their own time and not charging us for the landscape or the architecture, and so, I am not rushing them. So, it's saving us a lot of money, so hopefully, the thought is, latest thought is, those specs will all be done in the next two weeks, at that point, we'll be able to go out for quotes, and he's taken three to four weeks to get the quotes, and after that, construction will take place.
And, uh, this weekend, we had our first music concert at the, uh, space, and we have one more in July and August, two more.
Yep.
Pretty exciting, we had hundreds of people there this.
It's nice.
This Saturday, a beautiful night.
It's a great night.
And, uh, two more upcoming.
And that's the update there, listen, but I said that thing to add. We'll go on to new business. First, we have a donation to the fire department from Sugar Creek for the car show, and also from American Legion. Well, we have.
They got three.
We'll do one at a time. We have a thousand dollar donation for the fire department, from Sugar Creek for the show, car show. We have a motion to approve, to accept that donation.
I'll make a motion to accept the thousand dollars from Sugar Creek to the fire department for the car show.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to accept the thousand dollar donation from Sugar Creek for the car show. All, all in favor? Opposed? And then we have an eighty-five hundred dollars, uh, from American Legion for rescue tools.
The model re, uh, remanufactured, uh, tools, matter operated tools, and they were very gracious and, uh, we had a delegation go down and talk to them, they were gracious and offered paid for the whole thing.
That's very, very generous.
I'll make a motion to accept the eighty-five hundred dollars from American Legion for the rescue tools.
Second it.
Have a motion in a second to accept the eighty-five hundred dollars from American Legion for rescue tools for the fire department, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And then lastly, we have one hundred dollars from Inglewood Truck Stop for two golf holes, are these, uh?
They sponsor the holes, the, the golf outing.
Oh, gotcha.
When is that?
June the twenty ninth, I believe it is.
Alright, I need a motion for, to accept the hundred dollar donation from Inglewood Truck Stop.
I'll make a motion.
Gary?
Make a motion to accept the hundred dollars from Inglewood Truck Stop for two golf holes.
Awesome.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second to accept the hundred dollars from Inglewood Truck Stop, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, wasn't controversial at all. Next up is funding to bring up to date the zoning map and zoning laws, Jim, you brought that up, you wanna speak on it?
Yes, so, um, Cambridge City, the town of Cambridge City has a plan commission, which a number of citizens of the area participate in, and for, I guess, quite some time, has been pursuing the efforts to update the zoning maps and zoning laws for town of Cambridge City, which have been in existence since the fifties, and have not been changed or edited or updated, as far as they know. But unfortunately, the town has not moved forward on funding of this effort, so I'm here to ask this group to consider, uh, finding mon, helping to find money to help fund this effort. What it is, is the zoning laws have not been updated, as I said, since the nineteen fifties, since the, uh, the national road was actually the highway that went through central the US or central Indiana. Uh, nothing has changed in the maps for the zoning, uh, for this town in seventy-plus years. It's our obligation, I believe, as a town council, as well as a community, to protect property owners and enable growth. And you have to have proper planning, maps, and zoning laws to make that happen. Uh, it's also a goal of the comprehensive plan that we've adopted as a town council, and, uh, as we look to the future of Cambridge City and the town, uh, it's necessary to help us manage that growth, to have updated. You know, bringing us actually into the twenty-first century would be a, a nice thing to do, uh, with this situation. Uh, I support the plan commission in the process of fundraising for this effort, I've met with the EDC, Sarah Mitchell and Valerie over at the EDC. Uh, they have the guidelines and the resources that can help guide how we, we go after funds, and, I would recommend that the town board commit to this, uh, not necessarily vote on doing it tonight, but commit to supporting this, and look to see that we budget for it for next year, or we look to fundraise this year. Cost would be around thirty-five to forty thousand dollars, the plan commission, of course, doesn't, they all work as volunteers, but they would require a consultant, uh, to help the town rewrite these zoning laws, and bring the maps up to date, and to create a digital version, so we can move forward with how we use this.
Did they have any ideas around finding funding to do?
There are some ideas, certainly, uh, the town itself doing some budgeting for this. There are potentially grants that, uh, Sarah and Valerie would point us to, uh, and I believe even at the county level or at the EDC level, there may be opportunity for support, but that's something they would look to support the whole county for, not just Cambridge City, so, uh, it's not clear where the funds will come from then.
So, in order to go after grants and stuff like that, though, we'd have to have the support of the board?
We would have to be committed.
Yeah.
Well, and honestly, I feel like we've already committed to it, cause it's in the comprehensive plan, we just haven't followed up on it.
It needs to be followed up, yeah. I would just correct a couple dates, not contesting your thoughts on it.
That's what I was told.
Nineteen eighty-one was the last revision of the incorporated jurisdictional area that's in our zoning code as far as Title one fifty-six, there was then a comprehensive redo in two thousand five of the unincorporated jurisdictional area, the two-mile fringe, and what I've always thought, I wondered why they didn't in two thousand five do the same kind of more thorough redo of the jurisdictional code. I was not attorney either one of those years, but I don't think it goes back to the fifties.
If we look at the map and, uh.
Now, the map may be, as far as what is residential, and what is, you know, industrial, what is commercial, the map may have not changed. That, I don't know about that, but as far as the wording and what is or is not allowed in different areas was part of the nineteen eighty-one code that was put into your town code, and then again, uh, more thorough, more detailed for your unincorporated area was done in two thousand five.
So, the, the zoning commission deals with the unincorporated areas, we would only deal with the incorporated, correct? So, would that be two different lines?
I take that, no, you guys still have, a town has jurisdiction for zoning purposes only in the two-mile fringe.
Okay.
Not only just the plan commission, plan commission still reports to you, and you can either affirm, deny.
So it could be a comprehensive plan that would do the two-mile fringe area as well as the incorporated area?
Yeah, I think lots of work will be required on that, because of how much work was done in two thousand five.
Okay, great.
The unincorporated, um, you have your, uh, plaque committees, and subdivision approvals, and street construction, all of that was done for the unincorporated area, but the incorporated area is some dated, so.
Great, thank you, that's helpful. I'm the messenger, so. Again, I would suggest that we look into funding, and we, we ask the, the plan commission hasn't been to funding, by the way. We're not getting a lot of, uh, uh, success there at the county level, so we're, and at the grant level, so. I think having a vote of, of, not a vote, but a, a consensus of support from this group would be helpful.
It's needed, it's in the comprehensive.
And I don't think they ever supported the prior board, I think we just didn't have the money, and I think that, that's where it pretty much fell. Because, you know, I mean, they supported it, but we just couldn't come up with the money.
But if you're gonna support, we, Jim's right, we need to find the money somehow, you know, either grants or something, so.
There's always money out there, you just need to know where to look.
Yeah, Okra's had grant opportunities in this area before, just don't know if they do now.
Okay, we can pursue it, and I think everybody's on board.
Yeah.
Commit to move forward, thank you.
Uh, large trash pickup day, it's June seventeenth.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, for Cambridge City, customers only.
Cause it's large.
Yeah, what is large?
Is there, is there an actual definition of large?
You can put, yeah, you can put more than your normal trash amount, that's what's considered large.
I also think they'll, they'll pick up just about anything.
They will, they won't pick up tires.
No tires, no paint.
Paint tires, televisions.
Right.
But, yeah, they'll pick up a lot more than they normally pick up.
And then, uh, this, this Wednesday, June twelfth, uh, there's a meeting right here in these quarters of regarding the downtown revitalization grant committee. It's an informative meeting for, uh, all the businesses in that downtown zone, which is basically US forty going through town, and I think they all received invitations to that. But that meeting is here, and it's open at six o'clock, that's, uh, for commercial buildings in downtown.
I think it's gonna be, yes, and I think there, um, people from Hagerstown, um, several different areas are invited to come here as well.
Yes, I think, I think you're right. And last is a retire, upcoming retirement.
Glendora, she's gonna retire August thirtieth, she'll have thirty years in, um, she doesn't wanna party, so I think, um, on that day, I'm just gonna get a cake and just have whoever wants to come in and pop in and say something to her on that Friday, if you'd like, um. She did not wanna have a great big party, she didn't wanna go out with a bang or nothing. So I have hired her replacement, it's, um, Corinne Bog, and she's going to start, I'd like for her to start training June twenty-fourth, um, she's agreed to an hourly wage at first until Glendora retires, and then I'll move her into a salary position.
Is that full time?
Yeah, maybe.
Okay, I know we talked about that.
Yeah, we're still, still kinda looking at that, but, yeah.
Is that it?
That's it.
Alright, we'll move on to staff reports, town marshal.
Uh, my only thing I have is, uh, I'd say you guys an email, I'd like to request permission to hire Cody Frame to replace the officer or the open spot we have, or will have.
When will he start, if you hire him?
I'd probably realistically, July first, or like, well, maybe after that, but, uh, by the time he gets two weeks' notice and all that, we're gonna be, you know, July first, easily. Find my email here. So, I had asked for, um, our, our starting salary's forty-seven, eight forty, and, um, in the past, we've always given a five hundred dollar. in the past, we've always given a five hundred dollar raise after the completion of the academy. That's been our standard. Um, he's already academy certified, so I'd like to go ahead and add that to it, which would make it forty-eight, three forty.
If that's what you want to do, we will have to then amend the salary ordinance one more time. You know, that's what you did at your April twenty-third meeting when we were told that there would be a new person coming in. We've set it at that forty-seven, eight forty, so if we now want to increase that by five hundred dollars, of course, that just brings you closer to that three hundred and eighty-thousand-dollar annual budget. Um, that puts a total of all of them at three sixty-five, eight fifty-two, plus the five hundred, you're now over three hundred and sixty-six thousand, which just keeps restricting how much is available for overtime pay. So, but if that's the case, since you have that special meeting on the twenty-sixth, if you want, I can do yet another amendment to salary ordinance if you want to add that five hundred dollars.
Well, we need to add one person on there too, on salary ordinance?
Um, probably wouldn't, although you said all that's coming out of water for her.
I'm gonna pay her hourly out of water, yeah.
Hourly, great.
Until, yeah, until we put her on that salary.
Yeah, if we know that, yeah, we can put her on there too.
Okay.
I mean, we would be paying that five hundred dollars extra sometime in the next year anyhow, even if...
If, if, if he was not academy trained already.
Yeah, I mean, we, it was gonna be paid anyhow.
I did, I mean, we talked about this previously, I just didn't think about it.
But not as a... Yeah.
So, for, for the June twenty-sixth meeting, we will then have to advertise it, since we're making decisions outside of just here.
Yeah, that's not, it's not, yeah, any kind of, anytime you have a special meeting, you have to not, you have to just notify the ex- the executive meeting, you have to put it in the newspaper, just regular new meetings, you just have to notify.
Just notify, okay, thank you.
I might add that he does live, currently live in town, he owns a, a residence here in town and, um, moved here from somewhere else. He's lived here a couple of years now, so he's, he's currently a, an officer of another agency.
So, we need a motion to approve this hire at this salary rate, is that correct, Tom?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion that we have Pete Roberts hire the new officer, uh, to include the base salary plus the five hundred dollars that he would get on completion of the academy.
I would second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the hiring, uh, Cody Frame, uh, at the rate of forty-seven, eight forty, plus the five hundred, uh, additional.
I have a question, I'm sorry. Is that five hundred a one-time thing or that actually adds to his annual salary?
It's added to his annual salary.
All in favor? If you buy.
Aye.
Opposed?
That's all right, I don't think so, maybe you had a couple things?
I have just one. Uh, just wanted to show my appreciation, uh, I know we posted on Facebook, but, uh, United States, United States Deputy Sheriff Association, um, I applied for it, they donated, uh, a FLIR, it's a full word.
Looking in for red.
Thank you, I just, the word. Uh, they were the same one last year when I, they donated three, uh, rifle play vests. I went to them again, they donated this, um, and thinking of the stuff, um, I thought in past year, some of the night activity we've had, vandalisms and stuff like that, I thought this would be a great addition to allow our officers extra eyes with some of this night stuff, so, uh, they can see a little bit better in areas where the regular eye couldn't see it, but this is gonna pick up like heat, heat sensors or the heat of the body, so that way we could see someone from a great distance walking, so they hide in the trees or something like that. This can also be used for missing, um, missing children, like, uh, endangered adults or stuff like that. We have a lot of wooded areas, the ravines and stuff like that, so this would be a great tool, especially at night, so I think it'll greatly enhance our agency. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to ask, um, last month, we talked about, um, when the commissioners were going to be, um, giving thirty thousand dollars, uh, as part of the opioid funds they used, um, I talked to Commissioner Butters in a meeting on Thursday. She said on Wednesday, uh, the county commissioners approved it for the interlocal agreement to go to all the other agencies. Uh, they are just waiting on the county council to do it, and then they're just waiting on the finalization of, uh, an interlocal agreement from County Attorney Ron Cross. Um, I don't know if Bob has talked to Ron, if he has any...
He just doesn't have it yet. He said he'd give me one as soon as he...
Okay. Um, what I'm asking for, um, the one item we got was the, um, FLIR, with the truenarc to identify drugs, so we don't have to touch it, we can get immediate results from it and, uh, um, so we know what it is. Um, the, the item itself is thirty thousand, that's gonna be covered under that, uh, to get an extent, uh, a five-year warranty, and then also there are certain drugs that need a little additional thing, it's ten thousand, close, and all the stuff I asked for falls under the restricted funds and the opioid thing. Um, I talked to Sherry, uh, we do have that amount, just asking, uh, permission until it gets done to also use part of the, uh, restricted opioid funds that we have to help pay for the warranty and the extended warranty. If I buy five, they'll give me, throw in an additional year for that, and it's a, warranty would be six years then, plus it's a lifetime of the data library. I just plug in the computer to update, so I'll have a lifetime of any new substances they add to that, and just asking for the council's approval on that, I know.
I, I would just mention that we had a fentanyl overdose within the last week, and so this tool would be very, very beneficial to us, you know, as far as handling, handling, you know, drugs or whatever, so.
We've actually had two in the last forty-five days, actually.
Yeah, that's...
So, we've confirmed that our, the money, uh, that falls into approved money for, for that. Yes, I, I've looked at myself, I talked to Commissioner Butters, and there's several agencies throughout the state have, have used the same thing I did, and it was all approved, agencies, towns, cities, so that, what, so they've all approved. It falls under one of the first four pillars, the priority pillars, which is testing for fentanyl.
And we have those funds, right?
Yeah, we don't have them all yet, but we're getting them.
But we have enough to cover that, and I, I sent Sherry the, um, re- the thing from the attorney general that specifically lays out all the uses for the restricted funds. Unrestricted can be used for anything. I just want to go again, I know last year, a different council kinda already gave theirs, but a whole new council, so worth, you know, with all the change, asking again.
We need, we should approve that probably, right? And I do already have a current invoice from the, the company, the provider, it's just for the item itself, but I do have it invoiced.
Now, Bob, we put the opioid money in the general fund, we just did a line item with those, and do we need to create a, its own fund? Here we go again with, I mean, the fund, or just leave it in that?
Unless the state where the council tells you they, they have to, I think it's just outside income like other things that goes in the general fund.
Okay, just going.
And what's the total amount?
Forty thousand?
It'll be right around forty. The invoice was thirty, just for the device itself and then the additional, but it would be right around, right between forty and, forty thousand and forty-one thousand at the highest, if I can, I can...
Unrestricted.
So, if we approve the forty-one thousand, that would cover it?
Right, the thirty thousand is what's coming from the commissioners, twelve thousand five hundred of that money is restricted because the commissioners know that my request has met the guidelines for the restricted, so they're actually using some of their restricted funds specifically for us.
So, how much do we need to appropriate?
So, it just, it would just be at most eleven thousand.
At most eleven thousand.
And I think we have, I believe, nine...
From our opioid funds.
Correct, I think we have nineteen, right, so far as of this day.
Unrestricted.
Of, uh, nineteen of restricted we have, I think we have about eight unrestricted, and that's not counting the most recent, uh, one we talked about in May, that we had.
Well, if we know it's come from restricted, we should use the restricted money.
Yeah, if, yeah, if we can use the restricted, that's where it needs to come from.
That's, that's what I was thinking of, when the commissioners asked us to make that wish list, kinda misunderstood it, but all my request was for res- requ- restricted stuff, so that's why they're able to give us some restricted, because it met all those guidelines, and they're harder to appease.
I won't.
Untangle that, make a motion?
I think we're just looking for a motion for, to approve eleven thousand dollars spent, uh, for the restricted fund.
Yeah.
Uh, to cover the warranty, right?
The warranty and then there's one tool with it for specific drugs that requires this tool, but I won't do any spending until, I won't do any spending until the interlocal agreement is received and everything is dealt with, with the county council.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the expenditure of up to eleven thousand dollars to purchase the, uh, the extended warranties and the additional tools.
Contingent upon approval of that interlocal agreement.
In contingent upon approval of the interlocal agreement.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion for approval of this, uh, eleven thousand dollars has moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's good work. Uh, fire chief?
Uh, the fireworks are on order. I talked to everybody, but if they want them, they're on order. I got to commit today for a fire, for, on the sixth, contingency for rain on the seventh. I'd like permission to close Parkway Drive on the, uh, the seventh for the car show, and I'd like the town board to require that cars can take it off of the, uh, park grounds around the bulk of the fireworks, so we can have that space, at least on the south end for the car show. So, we'll have a little truck sitting there in the middle of the show.
That's a classic.
If they give me fifteen dollars, it's fine.
That's what you should do.
Maybe they'll win a prize.
I know. Did you have problems, I shared, with Richard, have to...
There was just a couple left, it was, they done a pretty good job getting out. We didn't remove any, they weren't, but, uh, most everybody followed our request, and the DJ kept announcing it, all these, the police take the vehicles on.
So, we're gonna have to advertise that first? Yeah. Let's start with closing Parkway Drive on the seventh, okay?
I'll make a motion that we, let Jeff close Parkway Drive for the car show on the seventh of July.
Second.
Have a motion, second, to close Parkway Drive from the park out to Green Street, correct?
No, we could, we leave Green Street open.
Yeah, I mean, just a parkway.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's place, between the prop- the property and, uh...
Yeah.
Sorry.
On July seventh.
July seventh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I don't know how we approach the parking issue.
I guess we advertise it and just have the DJ advertise it that night, yeah, Facebook.
That's all you can do.
Yeah.
Let's see what happens. I don't know if you, if you get a couple signs to put up over there as well, maybe?
Okay. Is it good?
Thank you.
All right.
Unless you got, uh, money for a roof.
Thank you. Still short of...
Did, uh, do we get another quote?
No, we just have two.
I thought it was supposed to have one coming in.
Yeah. All we need is a third quote.
I'll write one, it's a good roof.
Did it leak the other day when we had that hard rain?
It leaked from the clouds.
Yeah.
It sprinkles.
Yeah.
I think everything's leaked the other day.
Public Works, where you have Ken?
Um, listen, I do have the no dog signs down in Vicentennial Park, Vicentennial Park are up. I've not talked to Johnny yet to see whether it's done any good yet on whether there, if the dogs are still going out there and using their business or not.
Just to answer that question, yes, they are.
Are they still?
A little tiny.
Have we removed the, uh, the...
Yes.
Bags and all this?
Yeah, okay, that's all.
That at least, cool.
Where's the, where's the signs at?
Back by the...
One of, one of them's like in the flower bed in front, and then the other one's back by those trees. I almost hit you. I'm watching. All right. And that, um, then I did have, uh, Hartzell's, a guy from Hartzell was in here today to look at the back room, he's gonna put a price together on what it would take to clean that.
That's the evidence room, right?
Yeah, the evidence room, and then once I get his price, I'll let you guys see it and do...
Is that complete mold remediation or...
From my understanding, that's what, cause he talked, Seth was there with him too, and it was, you know, cleaning the floor, cleaning the sides, you know, and that's...
Make it, come back.
And that, when I called him, I told him that's what I was wanting.
Okay.
But once we get that price back, then I'll let you guys see it to see if you guys want me to look, get a couple more people in to see, you know...
Yeah, you might send that out ahead of time, so...
Yeah, like I said, I, yeah, well, once I get it out, we'll email that, uh, to all of you guys, so you can see what there's...
Just make that attachment to the email you're gonna be sending out.
Yeah.
We still need to address the leak though, if it's still leaking in there. If we remove the mold and then it leaks again, it's not...
Is there still water getting in?
I mean, there was water a couple days ago.
I think, that was the discussion we talked, and Ken was getting ready to ask me, like, I had the keys in my hand after the last downpour, and I was going back there to check it, and we talked, we talked about that, but he did say that in order to do it, we're gonna have to have a place to take all of our evidence in a secure spot and take it out of there for they, so they can completely thing, so...
Are, are they going to do the work though, to make sure that it doesn't leak anymore?
Well, that's...
Or are they just going to do the remediation?
They're gonna, we'll have to get, if they're, the bulk of the water, I think, was fixed when I had the eve and gutter fixed back there. Um, I mean, you still could be having groundwater come in, I mean, this is an old building coming through that brick, and I, I mean, we may have to look at...
We had talked about it, it's more about groundwater from coming in last week.
Yeah, we've talked about that, and Seth, we, you know, he looked, after we had all that rain, he said it looked like there might have been a couple little places, but not, you know, nothing, nothing looked like where, where it was underwater or anything. Um, you know, maybe looking into like some kind of, if we still have a water issue, um, some kind of a perimeter drain or...
Yeah, we talked about a French drain, a trench drain across the back of the building or something.
You may have to look into, but I also think what might also help some of that back there is if there was a humidifier, cause, you know, you know, we talked about this, it's like, that door's closed, there's water, there's, I mean, there's no air circulation in that air back there.
It's dead air in there, yeah.
And that.
Even just an exhaust fan or some kind in there, maybe.
Something to move, move that air in.
If we're gonna move everything out of there, we should take a closer look once everything's out, and see, see what...
You know, if we get water in there once in a while, like from that rain we had the other day, well, that, the water gets everywhere when you have rain like that, but I mean, if we can, if we can stop it outside, those kind of downpour, I think we'll be all right.
With all that stuff out of there, then you can see...
Just have to have time to dry.
See the walls better to maybe see if there's somewhere where it's...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You know, coming in.
Yeah, we can divert that water away, cause water had to just be coming down that hill behind here, uh, like a river up against the back of the building.
It was more of the downfall, and I sent, I've sent several pictures when I've stood in the pouring rain, but I think also when it pours, it, just cause our parking lot is downward, it goes, and me and Ken were talking about maybe having a little higher diversion, so not only that, but down the alley, cause like right now, that gutt- that gutter just goes and dumps right there back into the ground, and maybe having something, that gutter going actually over where it completely spills and it goes towards, uh, where there's an actual drain, so that way no water, cause some of the sides are caved in, cause you can tell water is pushing in.
That would make sense. Let's make sure we look at that at the same time.
Um, then I have, I've talked with Choice One, where, um, they're gonna be starting on the, um, grant for the community crossings and that, which, I think due the end of July. I'm working on putting a street list of, for this year's grant, and one of the streets included is that up there on Shawnee, where the railroad ties are, because we can add curb there, as long as we're paving that street, you can put those kind of things into the grant, you can't just put, you know, drainage issues in the grant. It's gotta be a street that's being paved, so I'm gonna put that street into the project and, and put some kind of curb and see if there's something else we need to do, do with that drainage right there.
Get rid of those railroad ties.
Yes, that way those railroad ties will be gone. Um, then, the only other thing is, which, you know, I've sent you guys the email that I had let the one Parktown guy go that he just wasn't working out. had let the one part-time guy go, that he just wasn't working out, and me and Sherry's talked about it, and she done some checking, and since he is part-time seasonal, he can actually work forty hours a week, and so I would like your guys' permission and okay to have Ron work forty hours a week and give him another dollar an hour pay, which, I mean, it's, we're still gonna save money, because that won't, I'm not gonna pay another part-time person.
So the other top, part-time person was working thirty hours?
Yeah.
And then one more.
Sixty hours to forty hours, a dollar more.
And a dollar more.
And, and, you know, it's just, like I said, he just wasn't working out, and, and you know, and Ron, he's, you know, this is his second year working for me, and, you know, he's somebody that if I ask him to do something, you know, he's ready to do it, you know.
So, the other guys aren't been like, oh, that's been two weeks now, and everything's, we're getting everything done?
I'm going out helping, the other guys are, you know, helping, you know, now Ron has been working a few more hours, just to, so he could still, could still always get like a thirty-hour paycheck, like when we have, you know, a day off, like a holiday, so, you know, he's, he has worked some extra time to accumulate something for that those days.
Okay. Well, we'll need a motion to approve in, forty hours and a one dollar increase, and that has to go through the.
Salary ordinance.
Salary ordinance as well.
I'm just looking at the part-time people that talks about, will we pay a minimum of eleven dollars per hour?
Okay, good.
And so the fact that you're asking a dollar, I don't think really needs to change on that.
Awesome, cool, okay.
I'll make a motion that Ken allow Ron to work forty hours a week at one dollar an hour above his current pay.
But he still has to stay as part-time.
Little part-time manager, yeah.
Okay, one second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, to increase the one part-time employee from thirty hours to forty and a dollar an hour pay. All approved?
Aye.
Opposed?
I, I, I'm not sure you can still say he's a part-time, but you would say he's temporary.
Temporary.
Because he was working forty hours.
Thank you guys.
Seasonal.
Yep, seasonal.
And that's, the only other thing, me and Mike met last week, discussed some things, and I'm gonna try to keep you guys, work, give you guys a update on Friday on sort of what's went on though during the week, and, you know, what some of the things we got slated to go on the next week.
And we have raised some of the stop signs.
Yeah.
You know, they, the law was six feet a few years ago, and now it's at the bottom of the sign has to be seven feet, so practically every single sign in Cambridge City is out of step with.
And we've been, been concentrating on our, you know, your more used intersections, trying to work on getting those up.
And we have some old signs that are rusty and that are about that tall, by my house.
Probably have to purchase some more stop signs, just to get it all faded once along.
I noticed, I noticed a lot of them being raised.
But that's.
Already thanked you for that, as well, as the, my PFP of the Center Street sign over US forty is now straight.
Is it straight? Yes.
That's all I have.
Small features.
Thanks, Ken. All right. How about Bob?
Nothing that we haven't already.
Nothing, thank you.
All right.
I'm good.
Mike?
I'm all good.
All right.
Okay, Jim? I'll take the motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion, adjourn.
I am signified by.
Aye.
Adjourned, thank you.